Let's call it to order this, the Monday, June 22nd, 2020, meeting of the Elletsville Town Council. Would you like to lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Marshall?
I have your father. We come before you just one more time. We thank you so much to this little town. We thank you for the many blessings you're stowed on us. Just have to be with us tonight, clear our minds and clear our thoughts, and then we can make the right decisions for the right time, the right way, and for the right reason. Again, we ask you to bless this town, the country, and the state, and just be with us at all times, in the name of Jesus' name. Amen.
Sandy, roll call, please.
Dan Squawker. Scott Oldham.
Here.
William Ellis.
Here.
Trevor Sager. Hamon Samples, here.
Okay. Now it says we're going to open bids for road resurfacing. I'm sorry, the order's a little jumbled up tonight.
The first bid is from E&amp;B Paving for $444,274.19. Bid number two is from Milestone Paving. Their bid is $368,844.65. The last one is from All-Star Paving. And their project total is $457,549.15. So I recommend that the council take the bids under advisement, and then, once the specs are reviewed, the council can award the contract at the next meeting.
Okay. Does council have questions?
None.
Okay. Is there any movement on the request to take under advisement? Is there a motion?
Oh, sorry. It's been a while. I'm looking for the Zoom window. I will move to take this under advisement.
I'll second that. Sandy, roll call. When you get it?
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Hamon Samples? Yes, motion carries.
I could've just said I was muted.
There you go. Approval of the minutes for the Zoom meeting, June 8th, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes from Zoom meeting. What was the date again?
June 8th.
June 8th, 2020.
Second.
Motion of second. Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Hamon Samples? Yes, motion carries.
Action to pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll.
Make a motion to approve accounts payable and payroll?
Second.
Motion of second. Sandy?
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Hamon Samples? Yes. Motion carries.
Next, before, with council's permission, we're going to jump around a little bit. Before we get to the ratification of resolutions and ordinances, Jeff, I believe you had one item you wanted to move to the forefront?
Yes, we've been, there's been a request made by Medley Septic Service to dump reception rates at the town of Elletsville. I'd sent out an email to the board, and I think you have, they, you have a copy of it in front of you, if you want to take a moment and look at it. In the past, we had, currently, we let ourselves, Mine and Fanny Utilities dumped there, Todd Septic Services dumped there. I'm not sure how far back, but somewhere in the early 90s, and it continues to dump there. And then Royal Flush Septic Service, back in 2018, asked if they could dump there. The reason we allowed them to dump there is they do work for Eastern Richland and was doing some work within the system. And then they do a lot of community work around Elletsville. And I, and in, over the years, we've had several companies ask if they could dump at Elletsville. We don't really have a true dump site at the wastewater plant yet. We're planning on putting one there. So I've always made the decision to say yes or no. It's been very infrequent that somebody's asked. Medleys are local people. I think Steven even works for the, part-time for the fire department. So I thought it was time for me to share what's going on with the, with the septic calling, with the board, and maybe get them involved in the decision as well. I think they are here tonight. If they would like to talk to the board, I'd be glad to get up and talk.
Is there anything either one of you'd like to say? Step up, please.
Can you hear me? So I am Courtney Medley. I am the sole owner of Medley Septic Service. My husband and I have both grown up in this area. We're both graduates of Edgewood High School. And he has worked in the septic business for, all for 19 years, so we're not new at this. He did previously work for a local septic company before we decided to branch out on our own, for our own future and our daughter's future. And really, I mean, we inquired, just because this is our community, we've grown up here, and if we're going to dump anywhere and provide anybody with funds for dumping, we would much rather it be our own community than, you know, the Bloomington City. I'd be lying if I said it wasn't economically better for us as well. But ideally, we just want to be able to give back to our town. We are based out of Gosport on the Monroe County line. We plan on servicing, you know, our area, the Elletsville area, a little bit of the Bloomington area. We plan on, you know, documenting every address in which we dump from, or, you know, pump from, that we will be dumping. So we will have the documentation of where we are getting our waste removal from. And like I said, you know, he's got a lot of experience within the industry, so he will know, you know, what he is pulling from tanks. And if it's not something that's, you know, viable, we're not going to pump it, and we're not going to dump it within our community. But we just really like to give back to our community instead of, you know, providing more to the city of Bloomington if we can provide to Elletsville.
Okay. Council questions?
Yeah, can we handle the extra?
Currently, I think if you read my email, I mean, we've, we've been able to handle what, what's coming in to this point. We've not had a violation since the plant opened. It's a big plant. It's at about 60% capacity. Probably some of the things that go moving forward, when this kind of thing happens, it makes you think about, about what have you not been doing that maybe you should be doing. It's always been on the honor system, if you will, because we have no way of monitoring what's coming out of their trucks. And the fact that Larry Todd had done it for years, and his reputation was good, and he had also worked for the town prior to us, and trading off some of the business. And then, once we no longer needed him, he started paying a dump fee. And so, you know, one of the things is, should we require all of these, all of these companies to be bonded, insured? Well, if they do bring something that gives us a, a big plan upset. We're talking about moving from the blue building up here. We're certainly not going to put a dump site up here like we have the blue building. I mean, we're not going to have septic trucks running in and out of here. So I've been looking into building a dump station actually at the wastewater plant where it should be, where we can make sure we remove rags and debris that come in and they don't get in the plant. Only the, the domestic waste gets into the plant. And then the state is also requiring us to now start to monitor, as she said, you know, you need an address when you dump. You know, we don't have dump tickets. We just get reports from all three businesses that have a list of where they've dumped and what the gallons are. And then I pass it on to the billing office, and they bill the respective companies. So, you know, there's some things that probably should be talked about. I would think that you'd want all five board members involved with this, instead of three, not to try to prolong what they want to do. Me, personally, I, I, I don't have anything against them. I'm, you know, happy that they're trying to get into the business as well. These two people let it run over the hill or dumped it in the creek, and we don't want that going on either. What I don't think I want for the town of Elletsville, a huge difference in the city of Bloomington's facilities compared to the town of Elletsville's, is that everybody knocks on our door and says, hey, can we dump here? Because we can't handle every septic caller in Monroe, Owen, Lawrence, Morgan County. I mean, I've had people as far away as Lawrence County want to know if they could dump when they're in the area. And I, I've just said, no, you know, we don't, we don't have a facility for it. These people are a lot harder to say no to. They're local, great reputation as a fireman, so that's why I really came to you guys for a little guidance.
So perhaps, I guess what I'm hearing from you, and I think would probably be the better plan, is maybe we take a step back, let you formulate a longer-term plan before we agree to anything further with any company, not just this specific company, but actually kind of, if we're going to keep doing this, get some type of plan in place.
Yeah, but I, I think, I think to be fair to them, they're interested in an answer within the next couple of weeks when they can start.
Can you at least provide us the outline of a plan by the next meeting?
Sure.
At least the basics of a temporary plan?
Yeah, and I, and I planned to have a little better information for you before Monday morning, but due to some personal issues, I was not able to make that happen, so.
Is there a way that, and if this violates any utility laws, that's what I want to know about now, that we can say, we can take contracts up to a certain tonnage, and when that tonnage is being used or whatever, then there's no, we can't take anymore because we're handling all we can?
I, I think, and that's a really good point, is that we should always reserve the right to shut off at any time, any septic or sludge hauling company, including our own, if we feel like it's having ill effects on the wastewater plant. The last thing I want to see happen is, in 1995, this town was in, in pretty, pretty bad shape as far as their reputation with I.D.A. and EPA. Mike can attest to that. He was part of it, and not part of the problem, part of the solution. But, and so if that day come, I would be the first person to say, all right, we got to come up with a better answer. The good, the thing that's going on currently is with our own company, I know where it's coming from. I know what's coming on our truck, and when it doesn't need to be in the plant, it goes to the digester. And, you know, we're, we're able to monitor that and manage that. And I pretty much, with Royal Flush, they, I've had to call them a couple of times and say, hey, we're getting something we don't, we don't like. And they tell me where it came from, and we've checked in on it. And, and same with Larry Todd. He was always pretty... About what he was bringing in as well. So as you move out, and certainly this is not anything to do with the current people asking, I won't know where that's coming from. Even if they tell me it's coming from 100 West Main Street, Elletsville, Indiana, it could be coming from wherever. So those are some of the problems. We currently don't have a problem, so I don't look for them to cause us a problem. But I, I think some of these other questions I have in my own mind, I probably should get answers for, to give to the board by the next meeting, and maybe we'll have a better understanding of what we should do moving forward.
What was the name of your, I'm sorry, that your company again?
Medley Septic Service.
Okay, and are you in operation currently?
We have our Indiana license. We are waiting to get our truck. It's being shipped up from Miami this week.
Okay.
But will the two weeks cause you any great problem?
No.
Okay.
No.
They, septic trucks are inspected by I.D.A. annually. They have licenses they have to maintain, and certain things, like any other wastewater system, so.
I have one question. I have been there just one time when someone came in, and it's not very good smelling. So did the, does Bloomington have a, like, a food facility or anything to hold that odor in?
No, it wouldn't, hasn't.
You're like wanting giant tanks are for breeze, or what?
You're, you're right.
It fills the whole area with filthy nature in that city.
The ironic thing is, the flow coming from those three companies is only like 1.5% of the annual flow. And their dump fees are covering over 100% of the dump costs for the entire town's waste. So it is very beneficial to the town to be accepting, and it is not having any harmful effects. We just kind of need to move the operation down to the actual wastewater treatment plant. The other thing is, and I like being transparent, is all three systems have a set of keys to dump anytime they want. So if they have to go out on an emergency run at, you know, 10:00 PM, they just unlock the gate, the blue building, and they're able to dump. Now, that sounds like, well, that's a little bit of a free run, but also, I, I got three people that I trust being there, that if they see anything wrong, they're going to call me on the phone. So it might require us doing, changing our manual gates to some kind of electronic gates, that if we use swipe cards, we'll know who's been in and who's been out, things like that. That's some of the things that I see moving forward.
With almost every vendor that we have, we require a certificate of insurance so that we are covered if they do something, you know. And I, as far as I know, we don't have one from any of those companies, except I'm one of them.
Yeah, and we should, we should require that. That's something that Mike, and Mike's always wrote it down. I'm like, why are we, why aren't we not already doing that? I'm sure it's not a problem to get it. We should just require to have it at your office on file.
Well, why don't we do this if the council is okay with this? I would move that we table this for two weeks, let you think about those second, third order effects, and how we mitigate those, and make sure that we're not jumping off into territory without the protections we need ahead of time. Because surely this won't be the last person to ask this.
And then shouldn't we enter into agreement with each?
They probably wouldn't have, per, to have a short contract with each of the entities, just sort of setting forth what you've discussed tonight as far as insurance and automatic shut-off and things like that.
How about we, again, I'll make the motion to tables to give you guys a chance to work all this stuff out.
I'll second it.
Well, it's not on the agenda, so do we need a motion to table?
I, I would, because it's been presented as a discussion item, so.
Whenever you're ready.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Hamon Samples? Yes. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. We'll go, thank you very much. We'll go back now to the agenda item of ratification of resolutions, ordinances, agreements, motions passed during remote meetings of the town council. And Darla, forgive me, I haven't had a chance to read this copy you've got here. You prefer this to do this in sections rather than in one, or?
I think you can divide them up into three separate motions, because I think it's appropriate to mention each of the ordinances and resolutions by number. So rather than going through each and every one, or doing the kitchen sink method, I think you can split it up into three motions and cover it that way.
And, and as a reminder to the public, and to all of us, all of these have already been passed and ratified and have full effect of force of law. As much as we can create law and ordinances, we're just simply reiterating it now that we're physically present.
Yes, the Public Access Council recommended that municipalities ratify all decisions that were made during remote meetings.
Okay. All right, so I guess in regard to that, is there a motion to ratify ordinances 2020-15, 2020-16, and 2020-19?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second. Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Hamon Samples? Yes. Motion carries.
Is there a motion concerning resolution, or concerning passage of resolutions 10-2020, 11-2020, 12-2020, 13-2020, 14-2020, and the May 26, 2020, oral amendment to Resolution 11-2020?
So moved.
Second.
Sandy?
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Hamon Samples? Yes. Motion carries.
Finally, is there a motion to ratify the council's decision moving Officer Dustin White from part-time to full-time at the police department, as well as the approval of local roads and bridges matching grant agreement, the Baker-Tilly agreement for consulting disclosures on bonds, and the ECS Communications lease, with a reminder that the removal of Dustin White from part-time to full-time was retroactive to a certain day, was it not, Jimmy?
Yeah, 20, March 22nd.
March 22nd. I'm sorry, March 27th. I said 22nd. Is there a motion concerning that?
So moved.
Second.
Sandy?
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Hamon Samples? Yes. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Moving down to resolutions for this evening. Resolution 15-2020 stipulating the use of rental payment from ECS Communications Incorporated for space on the communications tower owned by the town at Fire Station 81 on Curry Pike.
And I asked for this just so that I would have it in record, council permission how to direct those funds. And this just says that rental on the station, at Station 81, spark, communication power will go to the fire department's communication funds for use or fervorance of their communication peaks.
And that's consistent with what we had done with the prior contract, wasn't it? Council discussion?
I think there were four, there's no need to change that.
Public discussion on this Resolution 15-2020. Seeing none, back to the council for action.
I'll make a motion, pass Resolution 15-2020.
Second.
Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Hamon Samples? Yes. Motion carries.
Ordinance on first reading, that is ordinance, oh, I'm sorry, what is it?
That's 20, 20, 20. I apologize for omitting that.
Okay, it is ordinance 20-2020, or the other way around. The Burns Annexation, 4760 North Loudoun Road, Elletsville.
Good evening. This, this is a single-family property, a little under 15 acres in land on Loudoun Road. It is interested in annexing. Nothing very spectacular about it. They just were looking to subdivide, and the county was making it difficult.
Okay, so this is ordinance on first reading tonight, so it will be back again, presented. Yes, ma'am.
That's my family. Should I vote on it?
Well, we're not voting on it this evening. So I think that's up to you as to whether you abstain when we do this in two weeks. So this will come again in two weeks. Any relevant documents can be accessed from Kevin, and we'll go from there.
I just want to thank them for realizing they have an option other than sticking with the county.
All, all who wish to come are welcome.
Yes. Our doors open.
Yes, please come see us. There are no ordinances on second reading. There is no old business. The flood report, do we want to do anything here, Darla, or do you want to allow that to continue?
I don't believe, I don't believe so. Thank you.
Under new business this evening is agreement between town of Elletsville and Monroe County Building Department to assist with commercial permits.
All right. As you know, we are getting ready to take over the building department starting July 1st. That's coming up rather quickly. With everything that's happened so far this year, I'm not quite comfortable that we've had the ability to get our inspector up to date on the commercial inspections. Residential stuff will be fine, which is probably 90, over 90% of what we do. I've talked with the head of the building department for the county, and we came to kind of an agreement on, they will do the commercial permit reviews and inspections. Everything will still come through our office first. We'll take up, we'll, it'll be our fees. They won't be paying anything additional to the county. We'll pay them a percentage of the fees we bring in. It'll work out with the budget. It won't hurt us in any way. We'll still, should still come out ahead. And they'll take care of the commercial permits for, the agreement's set up to be year-to-year. We're hoping that by the end of whatever year from now is, we'll have everything in-house. Right now, we just aren't, aren't quite there.
So clarify just for a moment for me, they're assisting with this, or these would be the county's rules for commercial development?
It'll fall, we have our code in place, so everything will fall under our, I mean, our commercial code and their commercial code are essentially the same anyway, so there won't be any difference in how they do it. So, I mean, the general process of, of how things are reviewed and inspected wouldn't have changed very much. It was more of the administrative side of it, and that would all come through us. So that would still, nothing will be going through the county first.
But if they do change something at the county rules, will that impact these, for these inspections, or do, do our municipal rules override that?
We really go off of what the state tells us as far as building code goes, and I mean, our ordinances are basically the same.
Is this something so urgent that we couldn't pin it for a couple of weeks to think this one out, when all the council be present?
Well, yes and no. I mean, with the building, with the department coming our way soon, if we were to get any commercial permits in that time, I don't know what we'd do with them until this is straightened out, or settled in one way or another. With that said, we don't typically get a lot of commercial permits. We average about eight a year, and had a couple come in already this month. I don't know of anything really coming in.
But we could.
Expecting. It could, yeah.
I, I would advise the council to, I passed along, after I drafted this, I passed along a copy of the memorandum of understanding to the county, and I have not heard back from them, so.
And, you know, the only, my only hesitance in this, and I'll just say it upfront, is having the acquaintance of several business people, they find it notoriously difficult to deal with the county. And I don't want to get ourselves in a position where commercial space decides they'd like to go elsewhere when we truly need it, just because of difficulties and red, red blocks, or red, red flags that have been thrown up because we didn't have our act quite together yet.
And I'll be honest, I'm hoping that by the permits coming through our office first, instead of going through their office first, that will alleviate some of those problems. And from my feedback is on the commercial side, that their inspectors have done a very good job. So that, and that makes me feel comfortable on that portion of it. And I think us handling the administrative part of it will kind of sort out the rest of it.
My, my concern, and I did share this with Kevin, is passing the money through us payable to them. I would much prefer that we assess the fee and make that commercial paid person pay the county, just because everything I pay out has to have appropriation. And the, it's hard to forecast and set aside money for it to pass through. Does that make sense to you?
Is there an easier way to do that, or does it have to be?
Because my concern is quite, I think, echoes Scott's, especially if we, if we just say, here, you guys do all of it. We don't even have that buffer that Kevin was talking about.
Maybe we can talk about this with one of the county attorneys, and Jim Gersbauer, because I understand Kevin's position about wanting to have them, the commercial permits be funneled through the town first so that we know what's out there, so that we can track them. So maybe we can just make different arrangements with regard to payment, but I do like the idea of the, the permits coming to the town first.
Is there a way, until we have this worked out, we can pay a commercial inspector a fee? To, I mean, if we're not having that many commercial inspections?
I mean, the other option was to contract independently with someone else to do the inspect, review and inspections.
I would almost prefer that.
I would almost prefer that and pass along that cost to the person seeking the permit.
Well, that cost too, we wouldn't, if we, you said it yourself, if we weren't shut down due to COVID.
Right.
We wouldn't have that cost, so that would be a cost related to COVID right there.
Right. And if we do that, I don't know how they would charge on top of what we charge as a fee.
I would too.
Can you, can you investigate for us what it would cost to have some money essentially on retainer to do these things?
Yeah, I can check on that.
And we will get payment for the services, you know.
Correct.
It's just an issue of passing it through to collect the money and disperse that money in the same year.
Right.
For that incurred expense without appropriation.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I, I just, I completely echo Scott's concern. I mean, I, I don't want a, a simple...
Don't get me wrong, I think the people of the county are great folk.
Right.
But they have a different mission set than what necessarily we do, so.
We have more of a growth mentality, I would think.
Is there public comment on this before we come back to motions?
We'd love to hear public comment on this.
Okay, is there a motion concerning this? Okay, is there a motion concerning this?
Well, would this motion be to?
To table.
Table?
I would encourage a motion to table.
Yeah, um, but you're saying that could give, does Kevin have the power to enter into a short-term contract with somebody if they need to before our next council meeting?
Would you need it before next?
He would, if you gave him the authority.
I would much prefer have a resolution for that, limited authority until we can rule on this.
So move to table the entire agenda item with the exception that he is allowed to enter into short-term contracts, no more than thirty days?
Correct.
Is that, I don't know, the words in your mouth, but I.
No, no, that's kind of something I was thinking, so that way, it gives us some breathing room to, for him to do some research on how much it would cost, we may not have anybody, but I would hate to, to tie your hands if we do have someone.
Right.
And on the other hand, I'd hate to tie our hands for the next year with a county, with the county contract, or, or you just, I mean, one of the worst things you could tell a business is, yeah, we'll get this figured out, we don't know when, but next government meeting, no one wants to hear that.
Yeah.
And would you be okay with Kevin telling that person, whatever fee that Ellisville should get from him, but then whatever the fee was for that person, whoever it might be, that the person seeking the permit would pay that directly to that contractor, so to avoid that?
I'm not sure how Darla prefers that work.
Yeah, I.
I mean, I do have some money in his latest professional because of, we aren't under a contract for engineering services anymore, so there is a little bit there, but we, Kevin told me what one big project was, and there's just, hmm, no way I could do that without an additional appropriation, which takes at least six weeks.
Well, I mean, that's basically how it works with the county right now and us getting our money, because it comes in a month, two months after the fact.
Can I interject something?
Well, that was, that was going to be my question, is when you, when you get the application for a commercial permit, I mean, will they pay right up front with the application, or is that something that they can pay later?
They pay, they pay before they start going any work, so usually.
Okay, my question, we have money that can be spent that the, from the CARES Act for COVID-related expenses, we've, I think we've laid out the case that we would not have this expense if it weren't for COVID, so why can't that money be used to pay for the short-term contract if we need it?
Uh, without looking at the CARES Act, I don't know, I mean, it could be maybe, but.
I'm thinking that's something we need to, to look at.
Okay, I do have print out there for this, what can you pay from CARES?
I guess my comment would be this, that if something is so urgent that they need their permit within the next two weeks, I would think that whatever businesses that has that urgency would be happy to pay whatever they needed to the inspector to get this done. There's nothing that close, it's near-term, that requires inspection, is there? There's only one big project working, but I think they've already got their certificate.
There's a couple coming in, but I think they've already, have applied to the county or are this week.
Sandy, I would say number six, and this is what I would point you to, Darla, is any other COVID-nineteen-related expense reasonably necessary to the function of government that satisfies the CARES Act's funds eligibility criteria, obviously documentation required costs that were accounted for in the budget most recently approved, which we've done that, as of March twenty-seven twenty twenty, and are used for a substantially different purpose from what was originally anticipated, and such a line item, allotment or allocation, are not eligible for this reimbursement, so we'd have to see how that reading.
Well, and I, you know, I don't really, no, some of that we'll have to rely on.
That's, that's what I'm saying, yeah, that's, that's the one thing I would say to that part.
They touched on it at a seminar I attended last Thursday, and they said that, like, equipment to work at home, if we had to set up equipment for everyone to be able to work at home.
Right.
That would be an acceptable expense, but otherwise, I mean, I'm struggling to see the.
Well, this is an education delay for getting this person up to speed. If not for the CARES, if not for COVID-nineteen, this would not have happened, we would have been ready to go, and we wouldn't have this conversation.
Good point. The only other option, and I, I would have to, you know, check with State Board of Counsel to set up an on-herbert fund, to put money in and pay money out without budgeting, so.
Well, it would seem like, I'm sorry, was yours a motion, or?
Well, I, I can make it a motion.
I just didn't know what you intended.
All right, I'll make a motion to give Kevin thirty days' approval to enter into a contract with anybody needing to do commercial inspections.
And to table, what's currently on the table?
And to table, what's current, do we need two separate motions for that, Darla, can I put that as?
I think you can do one motion.
Okay, and table the agenda item on the agreement between the Town of Ellisville and Monroe County Building Department to assist with commercial permits.
I'll second that, but my comment on that, so just wanted to make sure, was, again, we're talking about two weeks here.
Mm-hmm.
Before, and that way it gives you some time to get.
Yeah.
Some answers and kind of think this out a little bit better, knowing where, I think, some, or at least part of the council, what, what our intent is, necessarily.
Sure, sure, yeah, I don't, I don't think it's going to cause any issues on our end, but.
Right.
And I apologize for giving this to you so late, it's.
It, it, it is.
Came up and caught me by surprise.
Wouldn't it be three weeks, because our next meeting is, isn't it the thirteenth?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so there's a motion and a second on the table, Sandy?
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Lee Malice?
Yes.
Campbell Samples?
Yes.
Motion care.
Next is erosion control bond release, Ruby Creek Phase One.
Hey, me again, all right, um, this one pretty short, Phil Tapp had a bond for, or actually, letter credit for seventy-nine hundred dollars that covered erosion control with the start of plating of Phase One, and I had our inspector out and check that last week, he said everything looked good, the items were construction entry, which is gone, the bird's already put in, so they don't need that anymore, silf fencing and mulch seeding on the lots that aren't under construction, all those have been taken care of, anything that gets sold, that falls under, that wouldn't fall under the bond anyway, because that goes under the builder, so, they have done what they're supposed to for Phase One, and he wants to get this back and turn it into Phase Two, and they're going to start that soon.
Council questions or comments?
Do they need a bond for Phase Two?
They, they're going to do a letter credit for Phase Two.
Okay.
So are public questions or comments concerning erosion control bond release? Seeing none, back to the council.
I'll make a motion to, uh, would it be to release the bond for erosion control bond release, Ruby Creek Phase One?
Yes.
That word salad hopefully means something to somebody.
Second.
Motion to second, Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Lee Malice?
Yes.
If you care.
Thank you.
I presume this is you yet again, Kevin, walkway project between Chester Drive and Dewey Drive.
Nate.
Okay, you're off the hook.
Thanks.
So, I, I received an email request for the Town of Ellisville to participate in a project, Marty Stevens, original township trustee, is putting in a walkway and erosion control efforts along the banks of the creek that meanders through the ballfields down off Park Drive and near Chester and Dewey Drive, so, from time to time, we help Marty when we can, he does help Ellisville as well when, when we need assistance, and Marty's put a lot of effort and money into improvements to the park, I call it park, it's a baseball park, but it's also a park where a large segment of our community gathers for, with our kids, so it is interconnected with Campbell's Park, and hopefully someday it'll also be a larger park as we develop Stewart property. So currently, he has taken the old Turtleback Swimming Pool, he purchased that, made a parking lot out of it, put in quite a bit of landscaping, improved across the street, took out a seafull-type area and improved, improved the aesthetics of it, and he wants to build a walkway from that parking lot that will allow people from three different subdivisions and people that utilize the parking area to be able to access the ballfields, and so he's wanting to build a, a walkway. These are the kind of projects that Ellisville and the Parks Department are interested in doing ourselves. We lack some of the finances to be able to do these, and when something like this arises, then my suggestion and my support goes with the fact that with our help, we can make these kind of projects happen and, and perhaps allow for even more improvements to the area or areas in Ellisville with Marty's assistance, and it improves park infrastructure, allows access from Greenbrier, Arrowhead Dishing, and the people that live in, you know, Dewey Drive and Chester Drive, it allows them access to the ballparks and utilize walking paths or bike paths instead of driving, and so I just think it's an all-around good idea to participate, but since he asked in an email, and since this might take some effort, it's probably a week, two weeks, we might work on it, maybe not every day, that since he asked me an email, that I would let the board get involved and have discussion and hopefully support this.
So by participate, what specifically?
Well, we would actually utilize some of our excavating equipment, haul some stone, and prepare the path to be utilized, Marty will pay for all the materials necessary to make the improvements.
So is this like an elevated or sunken walkway, or is this just a crosswalk?
It'll be much like any other trail, the one thing I don't know is whether they have decided to pave it or use the, the trail dust, it's a mixture of small pea gravel and quarter minus, and it's a, a byproduct of aggregate, and, and so I do not know what the surface will be, but it will be cut out, bordered, and it'll have signage and all, so, it'll be a true.
It's not heavy traffic now, people walk through.
Yeah, 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 that, that's the other thing, people utilize it now, but they, thank you for the, yeah, so, so this is to make it a true walk path.
So you're talking about, just like when you walk through that little woods, I call it, where we already walk to the ballpark?
Right along the creek, it's where everybody's walking now, but it's not really a trail, it's just, I mean, yeah, I mean, eventually, I, I think this path will become part of a trail that goes all the way back to the Stewart property, and we, we think Marty will be able to help us with that, and then it'll interconnect with the trail that goes back to Blimington that the county has built, and interconnect with the Heritage Trail as well, so it'll, it, it, to me, it'll probably be the first walk path from subdivisions back into town, which, you know, our grand scheme, grand plan, I should say, is to interconnect all the subdivisions in and around Ellisville with walking and biking paths, so, this will be a big template for the future.
That kind of begs the question, and first, I think it's a great idea, and yeah, I would most certainly want you guys to help out, or us all to help out, is it possible that we can encourage it to be paved simply because, having had my father, who was in a wheelchair, had very difficult getting back to watch the kids play ball, and I think that that's, that's something that's, you know, clearly, some of the very little kids back there have grandparents and other folks who want to come visit that don't necessarily have the dexterity and/or the capability to get back there, and it's, unfortunately, that's the field furthest away from any parking, so if we can make it easier for them, even if we need to kick in something, I, I'd be all up for that.
I'll ask him tomorrow and report to you.
Because I, clearly, I know we have the capabilities of paving, since the guys did a fantastic job out here, so.
Yeah, I'll let you know, that's a detail I just kind of got by.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like I want to add more asphalt close to the creek, but on the other hand, having watched and personally experienced trying to get somebody in a wheelchair back there, it's just not easy, so. Council questions or discussions on this? Public discussion. Mr. Rary?
All right. I'm Dan Rary, and I'm going to be speaking on behalf of the Chamber, the Ellisville Chamber of Commerce, greatest, greater Ellisville area Chamber of Commerce. We've worked with the Rural Opportunity Initiatives from the state, and that's part of our envisioned Ellisville situation, and one of the things that they talked about was the importance of paths and walkways and trails, and I think anything that we can do to connect all these things, I know when my grandkids were playing ball over there, my mom's ninety-three, and I'd try to get her up there, and she's on a walker, and it's gravel, and.
Yep.
It was tough, but she's tough, and we'd get her up there if we had to carry her, but I just, I think that the Chamber is very much in favor of doing things like this and expanding any of the parks that we can, we were talking last month about the Stewart Park, and I think that it's a wonderful asset, and it, and you folks mow it and bale hay on it, and it looks nice, and I can't wait for that to all be improved and change it into a real park with parking and everything, and it's kind of the gateway of Ellisville there, and I think it's a wonderful thing to be able to drive into Ellisville and, and see that over there, how, how pretty it is, and the industries that are coming in, when they interview people, that's one of the things that they always ask about, is what kind of park system do you have, and what kind of trails do you have, and I think it's real important for, as, as, to encompass everything, you know, we're trying to get industry and everything, and when people are coming in here to work, that's one of the things they want, and then if I put on my Realtor hat, that's one of the things that people ask about right after schools, schools are usually the first, and then they want to know about the trails and the, and the parks, and, and what, what they've got for their, what we've got for their kids, so I think that this is an important thing that we, that we do, and encourage it to be paved, and interconnect everything, the Stewart Park and, and the Heritage Trail, and then one of these days, after fifteen or twenty years, they'll even have a trail down in front of my farm.
[laughing]
To connect to the, to Lous Road, to the Cars Park Farm, and they're lacking just a few miles of doing that, that's not us, that's the county, but that, that would interconnect with that, and that'd really be great.
Yeah.
And then when my kids take my keys away from me, I can ride my bicycle on Ellisville.
[laughing]
Thank you.
You missed the council.
I'm Stewart Park, yeah, I missed the council.
Is there further public comment? As there is none, back to the council for motions.
Okay, is this, um, do we have to a second reading on this, or we just can?
There wouldn't be a second reading, I guess, um, it might be appropriate for you to table it so that Mike Farmer could get back with the township trustee and work out the details of the project, and then report back to you as he suggested, so.
Do you need that time to do that?
Ooh, I always have, I always hate to wait, um, I, I don't know, I'll have to ask Marty that, it's two weeks, I, I think, I, I think I'd wait two weeks.
Can I, can I offer an amendment to your?
Absolutely.
I, I would amend that you have permission to move forward with it unless it's going to cost a substantial sum of money, then you come back to us.
That will be fine, but we, we will not be paying for any of the materials.
You okay with that?
At this time.
Do we need to specify what's substantial, because I know that's a vague term?
Over twenty-five hundred.
Okay, all right.
Over twenty-five hundred?
Does that work?
I asked for it.
All right, I will move to approve the walkway project between Chester Drive and Dewey Drive, cooperation with Rixland Township, and with, okay, my brain just, what?
With the provision that?
With the provision that if it goes over twenty-five hundred dollars of the town incurring cost, it comes back to us.
Whenever you're ready.
Not used to these long motions.
And I do take you mean beyond the labor cost.
Yes, yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Lee Malice?
Yes.
Campbell Samples?
Yes.
Motion care.
Moving to privilege of the floor, anyone having business for the council not part of the normal agenda. Seeing none, moving now to supervisor comments, start with you, Mr. Town Manager.
Uh, I have nothing.
I have nothing.
Marshall? Danny? Chief? Kevin? Oh, we're about a thousand. Love you guys.
We must have bored you guys today, because usually somebody's got something. There you go.
Anything you'd like to add? Counsel comments?
I do want to remind you there's a lot of papers to sign, so please, I know that has to take work from all our teams.
Think we've got that.
I'm just glad to be back and see the public face to face again. That's my comment.
Well, I think I'd just like to add that, thank you guys all for the forbearance for us working through COVID. It's not over yet. I would suggest patronizing your favorite local restaurants, because they really desperately need you right now. As well as your local businesses. But other than that, thank you for everything that the community did as a whole to, to see us through and get us through that into making it the best we possibly could.
Absolutely. Oh, real quick, how many cases has Ellisville had?
Don't know that we have a specific count on Ellisville as a whole.
Last I heard was kind of around zero, so I don't know. Yeah. Oh, yeah, okay.
I, I will say that I've been quite uncomfortable many times in the last few weeks here and there. You know, it's just everywhere is not a great place to be under the current circumstances, but this feels fairly comfortable and safe, so. For what it's worth.
Thank you. Other council comments? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will motion to adjourn.